Someone will call this maybe in the morning. Calling the Longmont Housing Authority morning meeting. Tuesday, April 20, 2024. To wait.
I'm not sure if she's going to be on, so I can just know that.
Is Marcia coming on?
Yeah.
Oh, she doesn't know. Okay, I thought you were talking about.
No, can you say she's let down?
Oh, she is. All right. I get confused about who's zooming and who is. So, let's do road call. Joe, head chair.
Suzie Love, bearing commissioner.
Commissioner Yarborough.
Commissioner, please.
Commissioner Chris.
Deputy City Attorney Jamie Rock. House District Attorney Donald Stare, ready for safety.
Commissioner, Mr. Superbowl. Second Assistant Attorney. L.J., Assistant Director Lawrence Allen.
Interim Executive Director Harold Mugges.
Karen, I'm against commission.
Thank you. Do we have any agenda revisions or submissions? So can we, I need a motion to approve the July 16th, 2024 minutes unless there are any revisions. We have any revisions. Saying none.
I move that we approve the July 16th, 2024 minutes.
Second. By Counselor McCoy, signed by Counselor Al Gore Ferring, to approve the July 16th, 2024 minutes. All of us in favor?
Aye.
All of us opposed. That passes.
If you were here, do you vote? That's what I wanted clarification. So she was not here for the meeting, would you vote on that?
No. So that passes six to five.
Five.
Five to one.
Zero.
Zero, because she didn't vote against.
Okay.
Okay, I get it.
Or you just say she abstained.
Yeah.
So actually, it is six to zero with Counselor Yargro.
Five to zero with Council with Commissioner Yargro abstaining.
Abstaining. And Commissioner Martin absent. Public invited to be heard, seeing no one will.
Oh, wait, Bella, oh, she just looked at you and just said no. No, just, I thought you left.
I came back.
Hi.
Hi.
So we are now at public invited to be heard. Is there anyone in the public ever like to hear?
Yes, there is.
Okay, step right up.
Do I still need to give my name and address?
That's your writing.
Okay, Shaquille Wall, 219 Francis Street. Commissioners, I'm here to invite you and all members of the public to a presentation on housing affordability. This presentation is being hosted by Launch Longmont Housing and is being hosted at the Heart of Longmont Church. Proceeds will go to benefit the Wesley Townhome Project, which are 11 permanently affordable homes for families that are being built in collaboration with the Inbetween and will replace a parking lot. Our program will open with remarks by the Pastor Claire McPilti Drews of Heart of Longmont, who will speak on the moral case for housing affordability. Our invited speaker is Chuck Marone, the founder of Strong Towns, a nationally known organization founded in 2008, which promotes policies which improve the financial sustainability of cities. Strong Towns ideas are influential, having inspired both state and federal legislation and countless other organizations like Launch trying to make cities great places to live. These policies, not coincidentally, also improve housing affordability, public transit uptake, walkability, bikeability, and general quality of life. To paint with a broad brush, Strong Towns advocates for policy changes which are actually under the control of local governments and that can make a huge impact in the city. They advocate for sensible urban planning policies that discourage sprawl, reduce traffic, and promote local businesses without creating fiscal cliffs for cities through horizontal expansion. We believe that these policies and ideas are particularly relevant to Longmont, given that we are at our horizontal limit and that outcomes like housing affordability and promotion of multimodal transit are high on the priority list for most of the public and also for city council. This event is Thursday, September 12th at 6:30 PM at the Heart of Longmont Church. Tickets are $7 and proceeds benefit the Wesley Townhome Project. And tickets are available at launchlongmonthousing.org through Eventbrite. After Chuck's talk, there will be Q and A and we'll be hosting a fair for other organizations in town that do advocacy work around housing affordability so that attendees can learn how to get involved themselves and learn who is doing good work.
Thank you, Shaquille.
Thank you.
September 12th?
6:30 PM.
All right. Okay. After that, I'm going to the only business. First one on the list is Resolution L.J. 2024-16, approved acceptance of a grant from the University of Denver for research of trauma-informed design at the Suites of Park.
I forgot to write a memo, so I apologize. Basically, 2022, I think you guys signed a memo or an MOU with the EU to do some research and they did receive the grant. They have been doing the work, but we never signed a sub-award agreement with them. It was something that I think just got caught up in all the changes that have been happening. And so we pushed base with them, double-checked with the agreement, needed some changes. It referenced Lisa, who was the regional, we changed that to me. Confirmed that we could get them some of the reports that they were asking for because originally it said police reports and we weren't connected by an act. But some de-identified incident reports from public safety was something we could provide. So we did some changes to the document and it's ready to go, it's ready to sign. We are getting $6,000 in return for them coming onto our property and working with the clients and getting some information. So we just have to wrap up this document so that they can close out their grant and put us in check.
What, you said you were not going to give them some of the documents they asked for?
Originally, they had listed police reports and we weren't comfortable giving client data. They didn't want client data. I think it was just listed in there, but really what they wanted is incident data. Which is something we didn't get, we get from Sarah.
Just called pursuit.
Yeah. So we were able to run a report and send that to them.
And just a reminder, the Suites was not filled with trauma-informed design, so they're participating in research in other permanent supportive housing as well to have some data to compare.
We really did the reports.
So with this grant, is there some way to give a trauma-inforced design?
Not, not really.
It's not really enough money to do anything?
No, I mean, it's really just covering the admin time for property manager to do some extra work. We are, we did get a grant from the city to replace the doors, which will help because that's one thing that causes some issues at that property. But really, until you like a huge teardown recap type thing, it's just designed to be over time, so it doesn't, it's not ideal. So that's kind of the research they're looking at is what to do, what not to do.
So is there any, are there any other questions from the council? So then can I have a motion to approve this?
I move we approve Resolution L.J. 24, 2024-16.
Excellent. Okay, so we move, so McCoy, seconded by Counselor Yarborough, that we approve. Commissioner. You move by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Yarborough, that we approve 2024-16. All of us in favor?
Aye.
All of us opposed. And that passes six to zero with Commissioner Martin absent. We are on now L.J. 2024-17, which is to approve memorandum of understanding regarding services and leasing for Xenia Partners.
So this is a document that we are participating in creating with Element, the developer of Xenia, the All Roads, which, well, Boulder Shelter for the Homeless, which is now All Roads, but the agreement is written as Boulder Shelter, which is, they still can sign as that. And then, well, Mental Health Partners. We've already signed, one year ago, we signed a property management agreement with Element and that outlines our responsibilities. This does not change our responsibility at all in that. It really, it references it and it highlights certain elements of that. But we had nothing that had all four parties together, understanding rules and responsibilities for tenant selection and voucher administration and how the services are provided and who talks to who really to get, to get this job done and make the residents at Xenia have a seamless experience and have our administration be seamless as well. So there is nothing really new here that we haven't talked about in the past about how we're managing this, but this is just more the formalization of our roles and responsibilities across the four parties.
So is Michael Block going to be part of the management of this?
Yes. His, Spencer Downing is the supportive services manager. He's who really, the boots on the ground and his staff are the ones converting performance to the supportive services. So when we do our, we meet, we meet weekly with all four parties and it's really Spencer that's there and his group. Michael was involved a lot in some of the early decision-making and he's in the background, but it is Spencer as the interim supportive services.
So to be.
So we are on this one, so we're, the owner of the project is Element. Element is part of the tax credit application for supportive services contracted with Boulder Shelter for the Homeless, All Roads. And that was primarily because of the supportive services component associated with this. And they were the only organization that really had that capacity and that was at the same time that Bluebird was built in Boulder because they're both owned by Element. We're not the, in this case, in this project, we're not the owner of the project. We're merely the property manager of the project.
A special limited partner, but not necessarily decided to make it before he doesn't own it.
Okay. Does Mental Health Partners have enough staff?
So in this instance, they are only doing the voucher administration in this one. They won't be doing the support services, that's All Roads. So on the voucher administration side, we have been working with a dedicated team from so far.
Yeah, that's the difference between this and the Suites. The Suites and Mental Health Partners are supposed to provide the support that a portion of the supportive services.
That's been tricky in the past.
That's why we brought in clinician positions into this because in talking to the states, everyone realizes that when the Suites, it was the first permanent support housing project. Everybody knows it wasn't done well in terms of supportive services, security, and all of those issues. So those things, you know, when the Suites was done, they funded it for two years and then two years hit and there was nobody.
Figure it out.
Figure it out. Now, all of these things are built in within the pro forma.
Any other questions?
I can have a question. Holly, on the tenant selection plan, eligibility criteria, good things is the student eligible? It says if a single applicant will be rejected unless we're following criteria. I don't quite understand this. This one would be positive for supporting students.
So this is HUD rules, this is verbatim HUD rules for.
IRS. IRS, these are IRS rules.
IRS rules.
Yeah.
What did I say?
HUD.
IRS rules for tax credits.
Tax credits.
Thank you. So this is verbatim from the rules. This is, applies across all Longmont Housing Tax Credit properties. And it's really because it can get very, when there is a student that's a full-time student, it's either working, sometimes they're living with family, sometimes the whole family is involved in the household income calculation. And so there are very, very specific rules about how full-time students can be included in the Longmont Housing Tax Credit. And we went, this tenant selection plan, this has been blessed by you as the board of commissioners. We brought this in, I think, maybe May or June.
I think we asked, I thought we asked.
We did, we did have a conversation that felt like, yes. I was wondering if it was, did I do it yet or earlier?
Yeah, I was just.
Okay. So.
And I knew a little bit more about that because we actually have had a few students apply. And I had to track down the consequences.
If you're a tenant already, so you might be ineligible, then you decide to go to school.
So if your tenant selection plan only imply, yeah, a tenant selection plan only triggers when you're entering as a tenant. Once you're a tenant, then we look at your income changes annually and that's where it starts to play a role.
So the rule, if you don't meet, there's a couple of exceptions. If you don't meet those exceptions and you've been a full-time student as determined by the university, which is, they make that up, they determine what that is at the university level, for five months out of a calendar year, you are ineligible. So if you go part-time, you are qualified. So we actually had a tenant who was going to be starting full-time in the fall, had enrolled in April, and we were just at the four-month mark where she made the decision to drop down to a part-time status and we knew some of her financial aid in order to house Xenia. It's a really tough call. There is some federal legislature out there being proposed to make it easier for students who are receiving the Pell Grant to get a full-time.
Congress.
Yes. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's a full-time.
Any opportunities?
The initial intent was so that people could not use the low-income or the li-tech tax credit program to build students. But now the many years have passed from the third to the fourth. 1970 was 30 years ago in my mind. You can tell me the number. But times change, so I think that's what some federal legislators are trying to work out. So if you feel so. That is it. Thank you.
Any other questions on the recent? Same then, can I have a motion for 2024-17?
I'll need Resolution L.J. 2024-17.
Be moved by Commissioner, on Hidalgo Fairing, seconded by Commissioner Chris, to move L.J. 2024-17 approving the memorandum. It will be going to leasing for Xenia. All of us in favor?
Aye.
All of us opposed. And that passes six to zero with Counselor, no, Commissioner Martin absent. Back to, well, we're on the voucher funding projections discussion. And this is about Xenia or about all of the L.J.s? Okay.
So I'm going to open it and then we're going to pass it to accounting for some math. So we've kept you in the loop on our vouchers and the funding scenarios and when we get our funding requests approved by HUD and how our voucher outlook looks. In the last couple of years, we have known that rent increases were going up so high that we have had this conversation with this board a couple of times about how that impacts our payment standards, whether we pay 100% of fair market rents or we go to 105 or even 110, which was considered, or I think it would. I know, we didn't do it. We did, we chose not to do that. Boulder, Housing Partners in Boulder County Housing Authority paid 110% at one point, I think in '23, just to keep up so that people, that landlords would be attracted to taking a voucher and many other reasons, so that was one of the main ones. So now that we have seen that for some time, we are still renting at 100% of fair market rents right now, which seems to be the right, the sweet spot right now. But after a couple of years of this, something that is being seen across PHAs across the country is that rent increases are going up faster than our HUD funding increases, meaning all of the new funding that we get is not increasing our voucher capacity. It is only serving to pay those rent increases and not even the whole amount. So we have not been able to issue new vouchers for some time, at least a year, a year and a half.
Well, we stopped because we were adding fees.
Right, right, right. But also we knew that with the rent increases, that running our two-year tool over the past couple of years, we know that that was going to be a challenge. So here we are. It sounds like we are not the only one in this boat, but we are in what is called a funding shortfall. And so HUD has already been releasing public notifications about submitting shortfall requests. So this is out there for the whole country, really. And so we have been preparing data to put in that request. It is definitely important for us, not only to just try and keep being able to issue new housing choice vouchers in the near future, but also because we have the project-based vouchers that we awarded to Village on Main and Ascent and then Atwood, if Atwood gets tax credits, then it is more important for us to make sure we look at this shortfall, see what opportunities are there to help us out. Because what we needed to happen to get these PBVs issued and ready when the construction completes on those projects is that we needed enough attrition of our housing choice vouchers where people stop participating in the program and hold those as people drop off so that we can issue the project-based vouchers. But because of funding, the funding shortfall, even with that attrition, we're still having to apply additional dollars just to keep up with the ones that we do have. So we don't necessarily, we have plans in place to get ready for this, but we're not in the most ideal situation to be able to hand over the entire award of vouchers right at the moment. The projects are underwritten conservative enough that specifically Village on Main, which is ready to accept those vouchers as of October. We were conservative in the underwriting. We're not, the project can handle it for a period of time. But we do need to get those project-based vouchers actually assigned to those properties. So I'm going to hand it to Kendra now. If there's pause, if there's any questions as well, but she'll kind of give us some visuals on what the money looks like.
So, so here's kind of what happened is, I'm going to show you the table. This is some information used on HUD. We kind of knew we were going to have a situation because HUD increased their fair market rents so much for 2024. Never seen this large of an increase. And when you have vouchers in place, if they don't give you additional budget, you're not going to be able to fund those vouchers if those landlords take advantage of going up to the full fair market rent. Now, not all of our landlords do, but a lot of the PBVs that we have do. They go up to the full fair market rent to bring that money into the tax credit properties. So here's kind of the analysis we did with HUD. And I do think this is why everyone's having shortfalls. So in 2021 to 2022, you can see they only increased it $5, 21. Then in 2023, they went 113, you know, 189, and then in 2024. And we did see a notice come from HUD that there was a miscalculation. And I don't know if it was on this or if it was something else as far as funding, how we calculated the funding to each agency. But, you know, you see $350. If you have a three-bedroom and they go to a full fair market rent, that's $350 extra a month per month. So if you have all these vouchers at the beginning of January and you have that full increase, if they're not giving you enough money in that two-year period, you're going to have a shortfall. And so this is what we've been monitoring. And every month, I hope that our vouchers don't go up and every month they do. So in July, we actually stopped issuing vouchers in prepping for the Village on Main, the 18 that we needed to add. So we had 430 last July and we now have 414 vouchers. So we, we're down to 60 and I only have two more to get that 18. However, our cost went from $516,000 to $570,000 with the reduced vouchers. So if you add that up, you have to, HUD had to give almost every agency a ton of money, depending on, you know, especially their PBVs, to be able to accommodate the increase. So here's what's happened, though. They just released the 2025 rates and what they've done, they've dropped them. So they realized too, I think, that this has caused a dramatic shortfall issue across the board. We're hearing from, I mean, we're having agencies reach out to us and say, hey, can you absorb your portance? And we say, no, we came up to them because we don't have the money to do it either. And they're scrambling to try to figure out. We've heard HUD has also said you might have to just drop people off the program. Because technically the HAB contract says, if the funding is available, you know, we can give you an voucher if the funding is available. What they're trying to do is release some additional reserves. So they, I think they have kind of a little bucket of money set aside for housing authorities that are voucher-ing up and they have this excess reserve that they're trying to release to these agencies. And that's what, so our HUD rep reached out last Friday and said, I need your two-year tool. Because you're, you do look like you're going to be in a shortfall. And so I submitted exactly, you know, hey, you're trying, we haven't even been vouchering up. I said, but here's why I think we're seeing what we're seeing. I mean, I went from, in July, I was at $570,000 and it went up to $580,000. So I can't, nothing's dropping, but it also doesn't help that our property taxes are increased, right? Because then landlords are also having to accommodate for that as well. So we're waiting to hear back. I submitted the information to a rep. I'm waiting to hear back to see if I, if that is my shortfall request or if I have to submit something different, but it has to be done by August 30. So another option is we can talk to Tracy. I said, we may need to have, make a judgment call for the rest of the year to say, do we need to go to 100%? Like, right now, we're at 100%. So we're, we're at this level right here, but here's what's going to happen. If we're at this level and there's a landlord at 1585 and now we can only support 1466 in 2025, we have to tell that landlord, the tenant has to pay the remaining rent or you have to reduce your rent. So they're kind of putting tenants in a situation and putting, for our PBVs, that's kind of, I think, easy. I mean, at least on our side for the housing authority, I'm going to be bugging to this new fair market. So that, we are extracting our tenants with that. But that's what's going to start happening.
On the credit side.
Yeah.
So, I mean, is HUD willing to compensate for those shortfalls for the year 2025?
That I don't know. I mean, we've seen some messages that they're evaluating and that you have to submit for the shortfall and they're looking at all the agencies. So we included like, hey, we have two HAB contracts that we're trying to fund as well. I mean, these are kind of set in stone. These are li-tech properties that they've awarded tax credits. They're expecting, you know, they put that money into these projects. So we added that into our, kind of like, hey, we do need the money.
Well, I think if you. If you give us the information as counsel and we also can contact them whatever we need to do to support you and back that up and say, hey, I mean.
Good idea.
You know, because that's, that's not right for the landlords who are taking these vouchers and therefore, you know, too many that won't do it.
Yeah.
You know? So now these are doing it, going to be penalized for following the rules next year. So I think if you need us to get involved in whatever, you can formulate an email or whatever and you send it to counsel and I think, I know I'm willing to do it and we can send out and, and contact them. Contact HUD and let them know that this is unacceptable unless you're going to show us the money.
Yeah, what's the message we need to be arguing? And what are the impacts that it's going to have on residents and us?
We are trying to be, yeah.
I think it's Congress, I mean, you know, Congress, you know, and our senators. You know, you can, you know, this has been the year of perfect storms financially all over, you know, with our budget, but so in order to get more money, you have to voucher up to, to show performance. So we were trying, we were showing performance because we had historically not gotten more money because we were never vouched it up. So you show performance, then you go into a period of where rents are going up anyway. So that starts hitting you and then with what Kendra showed, they went up, what, $300?
Yeah, for three bedrooms.
So for three. So for three bedrooms, and so then that's coming into play, and then they realize, whoops, we went too high. And so at the end of the day, we can't pay above that number, right?
Correct. So the landlord has 1585. The difference between the 1585 and the 1466, it's the responsibility.
And even if we had the money, we couldn't pay the 1585.
Right.
So it's a, you know, yeah, it's a perfect storm, and, you know, they did this probably to balance their budget.
And it's still not balanced, so, you know. No, seriously, I think the sooner we can get on it, and if you want to, I'm just saying I'm willing, and it sounds like, you know, it sounds like someone's really willing to step in, call, make emails, send emails to whomever we need to, because with government, we all know that the one who, that's right, that's right. So that's how it works. And then we'll be there, some government officials will be in Tampa, too, that maybe we can set up some appointments when we go in Tampa for nationally, yeah.
Give us the talking points.
She is very well versed in how this works, but I need talking points. Or we could just let her talk.
So I think, I think getting brief by them, I think there's a couple of things that, in all of this, I think there's some good news in that, A, they reached out to us and said, give me your two-year tool. It looks like you're gonna have this issue, which is also telling me that I think our performance in making sure we're vouchering up is helping. And so it's not like we're having to try to call and find out who do we talk to about this, it actually reached out to us. To me, that's a bit of a positive because it typically is, when you're dealing with the federal government, a much different situation if they reach out to you versus you're having to track them down. So maybe that'll help us in this, but, and you know, and this is a national issue. So at the end of the day, if they don't solve it, there's gonna be another set of conversations in the sense of, is the answer that you reduce to 90, or is the answer that, you know, can you reduce five vouchers and keep everything else at 100? Or if you reduce everyone else to 90, or you impacted too many people, but they can't afford to pay it? So there's gonna have to be some analysis that goes into this, that we'll have to bring back to you and kind of give you the stoke of solutions and the impact of this solution. Because you can make, put everybody in a bad position because you reduced it to 90 or 95, or you put five, 10 people in a bad position trying to preserve the bulk of this. And I don't want the answers, but we're gonna have to do that work.
So it's pretty clear based on this, the impact to our tenants using vouchers out in the private market. For us, on our PBB side, we're not too worried about this rental adjustment. We can adjust down for our existing people in our PBB units, but for our upcoming developments, we are putting in place a plan to make sure that we can do what we plan to do. So Village on Main has 18 vouchers awarded. Did you say we have up to 16 right now? We've been taking a look at a couple of different things to, well, you can turn that first.
I've dropped 16 vouchers, but our budget is gone.
So it's somewhere in there.
I've at, when I put our two-year tool, I put in kind of five vouchers consecutively for three months and then like 30 more years. And then for Ascent, I just put at the very bottom in December, the additional 18. But that puts in a $1 million shortfall. Not for year one, five for year one, it's gonna be in year two, is where it's gonna be. I mean, it just, I mean, we were, we were not even there, but just one month creates a whole different ballgame in that second year.
And so we do have until, Ascent won't open until about January 2026, so we have some time to implement a plan here. For Atwood, if Atwood is successful in getting tax credits, which they're applying right now, we might have to say, we, we've said this from the start, but we awarded them a number of vouchers, but it's gonna be subject to funding availability because we gotta make sure, and that would be another year out from there. So there is time to work it back into this, but we are just trying to be very careful and make sure that we don't overpromise and underdeliver or.
I know what's weird is, talking to Kendra about this, there's what I call seasonality to this. And so we were talking about this, I think it's Village that we were talking about on the research. Everybody has recertification at the beginning and at the end. So that shifted your two-year tool, because, here it goes again, because we were hoping there was some later in the year, because then that pushes the two years out to three years functionally. Is that, am I saying that right, or am I gonna have a factor?
I mean, you could drastically change your budget if everybody is on a fair market. Is that what you're trying to, like, if everybody's research isn't the very first month of year, it could totally change what your dynamics are.
Yeah, so where they sit and when they have to recert, that's also impacting this too. If it's spread out, it may look like this, if it's all at the beginning, if it's in the beginning, it's worse, right?
Yeah.
So, and if it's in the end, it's better because of the two years.
And as an example, like, in 2023, they, they upped all of the suites vouchers all in March, and Tracy said, well, why don't you do it all in March? And I said, no, no, you're not. So you're gonna do it at their research date because we can't handle all of that all at once. We could last year, because we were trying to voucher up, that would trade, but, yeah, not this year. So it does, it does matter.
So staff intends to submit the shortfall request by the August 30th deadline, if that is what this board has to direct staff to do.
It's smart.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the only choice.
Yeah. Do we have a choice for them?
As much as.
So do you need a two-way direction or a vote?
I.
Just directions, fine. If the commission's given this, then we'll just go forward, and they will get you the information, maybe also the chapter, like the conditions and others.
Are there any nays again on council? Do not direct, say none, I think you have your direction here. How is this going to affect Zinnia? Because this may be open before.
It will not affect Zinnia at all.
Oh, okay.
They'll be following fair market rents as we go, but those are all state-funded vouchers, and so that's all.
Well, would the states do the same thing?
I mean, yeah, they'll be having to adjust and, and figure it out as well. But they're not federal project-based vouchers that would be affected by our shortfall request. They're not administered by LHA, but they'll be in the same boat in terms of having to adjust for this.
Okay. It never stops, does it?
This is the craziest thing I've ever seen, because it's kind of hard to have, I mean, you wanna be able to budget and set your course and know what you're dealing with, but it literally changes all your life.
Yeah.
And it's the craziest thing I've ever seen, and, and it's things you can't control. You know, HUD controls these rent values. I mean, there's a bunch of stuff in play.
Yeah, throw that in November.
Yeah, trigger it, stop.
Yeah.
It's good time to make people aware of this option.
Yeah, because this is a big, this is a big thing, because then, you know, when you watch these budget conversations in Congress, and they're haggling over balancing a budget, a lot of times, in my 20-plus years of this, HUD's the one that a lot of times will get cut. And so they're scrambling too, so there's a lot of little pieces.
And a lot of dominos that could fall from this, because if there's, the tenants are responsible for that now, they're looking for tenant-based rental assistance, which isn't necessarily available out there. That is in the mix on the Prop 1B discussions as well, but they'll be a need, and it's hard to come by since COVID.
So vote the whole ballot? Yeah, make sure that you pay attention to any rational tenants.
And the tenant-based rental assistance is hard, because when we're talking about the 1B funding, it's hard to deal with, because you also have the cost of rents going up because of the lack of inventory. So if you put your money into the tenant-based assistance program, you maybe solve it, you may actually solve an issue today to create a bigger issue in the future, because you're not expanding the units to bring the market into play to where you're not having this uncontrolled growth of rental prices. And so, and it's gonna be an interesting year, so. And then from our standpoint, when you think about this and you look at, from the city's perspective, and you look at the budget issues we're dealing with and the property tax base, you know, we'll give you all a balanced budget in a week. We had to make significant adjustments within that budget in order to do it. The one thing that we didn't touch in this case was health and human service funding, but it even took a $20,000 decrease because it's a percentage of the total revenue that's coming in. And, you know, depending on what happens with some of the property tax legislation, there could be a bigger gap. Well, I was telling Count, I was telling Erin earlier that Commissioner Rodriguez, you know, we know what we're giving you. We don't have Boulder County's number, so literally, we won't get it Friday at best, Monday at worst. So I theoretically could give you a balanced budget that's out of balance because the number from Boulder County now.
Why don't we have?
They're not legally required to give it to us until the 25th of August. We've got Low County's number, we don't have. But when you think about this broader system, and you can see the shuttering in the system is, okay, so now health and human service funding's down 20,000. If there's another hit, you know, I will be talking to you all about, do we lower some of that to grab ongoing money and use one-time funding to make up the difference so we can manage the ongoing core functions of the city? But you have more needs and more people going for health and human service funding because of gaps that you're seeing in this. And it's, it's going to be an interesting time period. So then, on the other side of it, we have the 1B funding, which could be the significant assistance to us, that we're advocating is really based distributed a population across the city, across the county.
Huge.
Thick. Could be in play, but you don't wanna necessarily do that. I mean, we're gonna be juggling a lot of balls in multiple budgets, trying to wrap our arms around this entire issue.
Are there other sources besides the 1B?
For?
For helping human services.
Uh, no, we have, I mean, if we wanted to allocate more money, we would have to cut somewhere else.
There is another grant, I'm interested.
There are individualized grants out there. This is all coming out of the Human Services Department. But it's not like, it's not like housing where there's an entire state division giving out funding that you apply for, and it could be for development, or it's usually much more targeted to specific uses, and it's smaller pots, where we've got different grants for different purposes. So it's kind of a different world on the services side, which tenant-based rental assistance often falls into that side.
Well, that would also, this sounds really bleak, I think there's solutions. We can find solutions, we can figure it out. The one thing about tenant-based rental assistance that we've learned from COVID, that, I was talking to Mary about this today, is it actually, in some cases, made the situation worse. Because people got the tenant-based rental assistance during COVID, it went away. People got used to that and still had margins and gaps, you know, because the assistance was there because the jobs weren't there. And so, you know, we're seeing a little bit, not as bad as some of the other communities have, but that's another piece.
Yeah, that's, it's not gonna change the rent value.
Right.
They're always gonna have to get up there, whether this source is available.
I think that also triggered, because that rental system went away, triggered the ask from people going back to jobs or looking for other jobs for higher salaries, you know, so it just dominoed effect everywhere. All right, you're in your direction, and we'll try to help you out, and then also. Where did you develop, oh, do you report interim executive director report on development updates?
So I'll go ahead and start on this. Since we talked about the 1B funding, obviously, we presented to you all about really pushing to have 1B funding allocated proportionally based on the population. There's been a few conversations going on. The city manager group came together, and really, we drafted a letter basically supporting the regional housing partners proposal. And, and so there's a few things that are gonna be happening. There's a weekly meeting Monday that, where this is gonna be discussed. You have seen the regional housing partners proposal, with that breakout and that funding. Another group sent out another proposal that is similar to that proposal, but the smaller communities worked together, Colorado, to basically pull their funds together, but then Boulder and Long Island were set. In their proposal, we actually ended up with more than we did in the regional housing partnership proposal. I think it's boiling down to a few things. One of the things that our regional housing partner group said is, we don't wanna be the board that provides oversight on this. Is that correct?
If for a competitive funding process, not, not washing hands through the development of this distribution model.
And so the, where it's coming from now is the city managers are starting to slide in and having conversations that we think it needs to be us. And so I will be there Monday to talk about that piece, and so Mary and I talked today to provide the broader kind of oversight group in this. There'll be an advisory board, but somehow we're in here. So we're talking about that. I'm also gonna talk about how cities can leverage this funding in terms of, if there was a project that we wanted to own that was in a neighborhood of $80 million, when you look at the pro forma, you start spending a lot of cash out. The problem is, is that if you do a traditional, if you go in to finance it, you can't get essentially that lower interest loan that governments can unless you have the full faith and credit of the city behind you, which creates other financing issues. But if we get the direct allocation, and we can take some of that money, and you do a traditional debt service on revenue bonds or a COP based on the revenues covering 100%, if you cover the 25% to 30% debt ratio, it'd take you to 125, 130 with the funding that comes in, then you can get that lower interest rate, which then allows ownership opportunities to come in. So then you can pull in a million or so dollars if you're one, then you get to year seven theoretically, and you start getting hundreds of thousands, then you get to year 12, and you're in seven digits in terms of revenue, but then, so you cycle the money in, debt coverage, you cycle the money out, put it into another project, you get this year's allocation, you do the same thing. That's a 15-year duration. At seven years, you refinance, and then you're sitting on about $30 million of equity on that $80 million project, which then lets you issue a different debt structure on another project, and you're spending out the money, which then, when we talk about these financial issues, you start seeing that that is part of the solution, that you can start bringing that you can start bringing in there in some of these. So you're making yourself more resilient over time financially, but you need that direct allocation coming in from the 1B funds in order to do this financing model. So I'll be talking about that and...
Can I ask the permission? So if the city managers are doing this and the cities are all looking at what allocation they want, and one city has the $80 million project, does that take away from allocation of other cities?
No. You use it out of your allocation.
All right.
And frankly, I don't know why everybody wouldn't do something like this, to be honest with you. But it's a different proposal. Denver Housing Authority is actually doing a version of this of what I talked about. It just looks different because the city of Denver has a direct tax and then they push to the housing authority and then they're using it that way. It's kind of that same model.
So, and correct me, Harold, if this is not what you have in mind, but we wouldn't actually even use, unless it was gap funding to help that project. But we wouldn't actually have to reserve that funding except for, in this case, it's really just providing that cushion if needed, if there's ever a shortfall in the income of the project. It's more of a guarantee.
Okay.
And it's leveraging the funding that we have, knowing that we have an ongoing source for 15 years to act as that catch-all if needed.
Sounds complicated, but I'm glad you could do that.
I mean, it's similar to how some people, how you can finance your home. It's just the numbers are dramatically larger, but, you know, it's when they look at your bank accounts and your savings and all of that and what you have. We're just using this mechanism to get a lower interest rate because, you know, it starts, the interest rate starts looking almost like a double A, which isn't that right now, four and a quarter each. September, it can be below that. And, because the feds are talking crime about this and they're projecting maybe three, they're gonna lower it three times and a quarter point each. So, you know, if you can get a double A, a four and a quarter to four and a half, then maybe by the time the deal comes together, you're four, you know, maybe high threes. That also changes the economics of the total deal financially, which then maybe it's not one and a half million, maybe it's 1.2 million. So, but that's kind of what I'm talking to the group about, the direct allocation on local control doing it. I'm also talking to them about the fact that, you know, we have to be really careful that we don't have one group running a process and giving money to somebody who wants to do a project in another municipality. Because if the municipality itself is running its projects, just like so are the vouchers, you're planning this out over time. And the challenge then creates almost a conflict point where then if somebody can get money over here, they then come to us and go, we want vouchers, we want local financial assistance, we want permanent feed waivers. But we may be at capacity in what we could do. And so now you have a group that got money but can't use it in a municipality. And so, trying to eliminate those conflict points really, in my mind, makes more sense for the money to go to the municipalities because if we're not mindful of what's happening within the jurisdiction, there's 10 ways you'll run in, you'll have a train wreck, you know, train wreck. So, that's what I'm gonna be talking to them about on Monday. I just wanted you all to know that ahead of time.
Right now, the regional housing partnership, all the communities in it, small, medium, and large, are all aligned on this methodology. And now we've got the service providers that have been actively participating coming in to do a joint proposal. So it's just a lot of alignment and everyone sees the value at this point. So that would be what we dig into.
Yeah. And then the service providers are different based on community. So, you know, like here, we have our center in Hope. They're kind of the two biggest that we have. We have a lot of small other service providers, Lafayette and, you know, that area, Assistant Carmen. You know, Boulder has its group. And again, we all have different needs and different issues. And so, it's kind of hard for any community to, it's kind of hard as a county to say, this is how we're gonna split it. Because I've been arguing to them, our issues here are probably more significant than the other communities. When you look at just our demographics and you look at our economic demographics, we're the most diverse economy. And so, our wage structures are lower than other places in the county. Lions is, you know, oddly in a similar position. And so, those are all things that I'm gonna be saying to them as to why it really needs to be in the cities. And then we can work collectively with each other. But if we're blind to our own local issues, I just think there's gonna be challenges. So you all know what I'm gonna say on Monday. I wanted to get that out of this part of my report and I'll turn it over tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, so that was your report on the operations?
Oh, no, that was just my, that was my report. They're gonna do development and then operations.
So I'll continue with our development projects. So the biggest news right now is Ascent. We are still continuing to work towards closing. The anticipated date is now September 9th. That is, we were really shooting for the end of July. But a couple of things have prevented that, but we're working through them bit by bit. One of them is that there's a Lumen easement that the Penrose team and the architectural team needs to work to have Lumen in their facilities before we can get the site plan completed. And then, on the other side, there's still some outstanding loan documents that we're waiting for and getting those coordination agreements through. And then we have been negotiating the lease for the Early Childhood Education Center and with the Colorado Health Foundation to make sure we get the grant funding set and our milestones agreed to, all of which has happened. And we're finalizing that lease with the Wild Plum now, all of which the investors want to see, even if they won't be occupying the building until 2026. So we've just been working through all the details of that. So that is our anticipated closing date. That means construction will be ready to rock right then. And that means our opening date should be January, February 2026. So that's been a big lift lately, just a big focus. Village on Main, I hope you've walked by, driven by, and seen all of the stuff happening outside. There's still a ton happening inside too. But we are running on schedule. That should be complete. We're gonna have substantial completion of that at the end of September. I think we'll be planning a grand reopening celebration of some sort in around October. So, the parking lot has been closed for several weeks, which turns out was a great thing. We ended up working with the LDDA and Boulder County Housing Authority to lease spaces at the spoke just so we didn't have residents trying to find parking, but also not having, you know, dales and tires or anything. So we could really just shut down the parking lot and get the whole thing done at once. So they'll be, we're reopening the parking lot for the first week of September. And I hope everyone likes the colors on the outside because that was, it took us a long time to sort out what would be the right pick. So it's looking great on the inside as well. Our last round of tenant move-outs just happened here a short time ago. And so, we're on the last phase. We're getting there. So then we move into everything that happens at the end of construction. So that's our next phase, that we're all starting to get prepared to get all of that documentation ready, to get our developer fees and everything else that goes with it. Those two projects are all encompassing right now, so that might be the extent of our development updates. We have some other stuff in the pipeline that we've been talking about. And we've mentioned Atwood is still going back in for tax credits. But on the LHA side, that is the biggest area for.
The Village looks great. I saw it the other day and I thought, wow, this looks really, really nice. It stands out, which helps.
That's what we were, we wanted it to look like it melded with historic downtown, not being a 1990, knockoff. But also, it's, you know, it's downtown. It could be a little bit more striking.
Yes, yes.
It doesn't have to fade into the background. It can be a, you know, a good anchor for that block, so.
Where are we on the electrical equipment coming in?
We've got it all sorted. We're getting the electrical equipment in in time. There might be some of the install happening after, but we're getting it all maximized within the project deadlines to get the tax credit for it.
Okay. Update on operations, who's to take over the occupancy?
All right. So we're doing a lot better on our vacancies, especially now that we have a fully staffed maintenance team and hoping in early 25 to add another maintenance person to really round it out. For Aspen Meadows Neighborhood, we do have some units done right now that need some work. The biggest one is Aspen Meadows B2. That one was a meth unit. That was a complete rebuild and tear down. And I'm happy to say we are going to move forward with complete renovation and contract that out and get that unit finally done and rented. We had gotten a code from the same company that helped us initially do the drywall. It was someone that we worked with that had ties to Habitat. And so, we're gonna go again with them to get the unit up, which has been sort of a thorn in the side for everybody to have vacant sitting for so long. And then also at the Suites, we have the meth unit 7228 that we need to get renovated. We are gonna move forward with getting some clean down, but we're just getting those on the rebuild portion of that and what that will entail. So we're hoping to get those finished by the end of the year because if it's occupiable by December 31st, we get to count it for tax credits. If it's not, then we lose tax credits in the latter. And that creates issues for the investor. So we wanna try to get those two units covered. Spring Creek 111, that one, unfortunately, we need to rip out the floors. Or not, can't say Spring Creek, sorry, that's supposed to be AMSA.
Which one?
Aspen Meadows Senior.
Oh, okay.
That one, we have to rip out the floors. They're soiled and we can't get this one off. So, so yeah, we'll be ripping those floors off and closing those. And then C5 was an eviction and that just, that's a full unit turn. Someone lived there for 12 years, 11 years. So it just needs a lot of touch-up and work to bring it back. Those are some of the big ones. So we have four pending make-ready status at Aspen Meadows Neighborhood. Two ready to rent at Aspen Meadows Senior, want to fix the flooring. Fall River has two vacants and they're working to fill that. Spring Creek has a few vacants. They've had some turnover recently. Heartstone and River Cross is fully leased. Lodge is fully leased. We do have a vacant coming where we have a death of a tenant, no family. So we have to go sadly, and it seems like such a waste of time. We have to go through an eviction process because we have to post the rents not paid for 30 days and then wait and then evict the person in court who isn't alive. So I'm trying to get in touch with our, yeah, I'm trying to get in touch with our attorney to see if there's any sort of administrative process to shorten the time because that's potentially three months of rent that we're gonna have to pay. And then the Suites, we have, we have six vacant with MHP, but we had two move-ins last week. So those units, we're finally seeing the payoff of moving to local case conferencing, the shift that we had with the state and MHP switching where we get our referrals from. And so, we're working really hard to bring those units up and get them filled with MHP side. Village on Main, we have four vacant units left out of 15. Kat has been doing a great job to fill up all the vacants that have either come from people vacating before the project or during, let's say, moved on somewhere else. So, working hard to get, like Molly said, get all the paperwork to the lender investor to approve. And then at Briarwood, we have two that Patrick's been working really hard to sort of just bring back, get new flooring, replace cover plates for like a couple outlets, just clean up and paint. They need a little love. So we're hopefully gonna get those two rented out soon. I've got Diana working with the units and property managers really closely to enhance the content of our reviews. So that's what's going on with the occupancy report. Also trying to have conversations with everybody about benchmarks, goals. We wanna get to a place where they're not having units sit for 30 days or longer. It's sort of been a hard thing to tackle. Some of these, some of these units have been beaten up, for lack of better words. Just taking a meeting from tenants, especially the ones at the Suites. And then if, you know, the older the property, the more it takes to bring it up. So we're working on that. And then for property updates, one big thing that has been sort of a recurring theme since the summer started has been landscaping. We had a lot of issues with that company that we did address with them and they've been doing much better. And they've been really responsive now and they're doing a lot. We've ripped out some, a lot of plants at the Suites that were causing some public safety issues on the back part of the property. And they're taking care of a lot of the weeds and bushes that were over there. One nice thing that came out of sort of a happenstance was forestry reached out to Molly and offered to take care of all of her trees at no cost in partnership with the city. And that's been huge. So we had, we did remove some trees along the Heartstone and Lodge that were infected with mold ashworm. So we're gonna get those replaced. All the properties are looking really good. We had Kaiser Permanente, I think they're a nonprofit anyway, but their nonprofit fund wing of Kaiser Permanente has been coming to the properties this month and doing ice cream socials. So they don't do any sort of pitching or anything. They're just there having a time, just getting everybody some ice cream and having fun.
And then updates on hiring?
We hired a new assistant community manager. She started Monday. We also have hired another one who will start September. And then we have a third who we're hoping would start sooner. She hasn't like officially accepted, we're still getting there. But assuming she does, she'll be starting on Thursday. So working to get fully staffed there. Then the regional property manager job announcement went live yesterday. So, I hired, you know, two people.
Will we be working for that position or make life easier for me?
It'll be great. It'll be great for my team to have support because I, that's not, property management is not my background, so.
I'm doing well.
I'm doing okay.
I was gonna say, you, this has, you've been talking about this, how this wasn't exactly how we thought it would go when you started, but it's been, this deep dive, I think, is going to be very valuable. Getting on the ground with everybody, really getting a grade and then be able to hire and know exactly what we're looking for.
The universal budget.
So I won't go in, like, page by page by page, though. But what we're seeing is at Aspen Meadows Neighborhood, the senior apartments and Briarwood, we are over budget on our vacancies. We budgeted at 96%, but we have some units there that have needed some extra TLC that I've taken a longer time, along with trying to get individuals in that could pay the rent. So what we're fighting is we're having to reduce the rent to a different percentage, let's say. let's say it's 50%, but we're reducing it to 45% to try to get somebody in there, because if you're just losing that, if you're not renting it to people, so trying to make sure that it works within the budget. A couple of, and the Suites is, is close to being there. They'll be over budgeted next quarter, for sure. As far as expenses go, Briarwood and the Suites, kind of how I gauge it is like, is it over 50% from the second quarter? Are we over 50% on many of these expenditures? And the Suites is over on their maintenance, and a lot of that is, has to do with the health and safety. We had a little cost just for meth testing, we're probably $24,000 over in budget just on that, on that line now, along with insurance repairs. At the Briarwood, we had two units that had insurance claims that got rebuilt and they're, they're housed now, but we also have two others that need some TLC as well. That's where it's at. So those are the two expense areas that seem to be in for this model. But other than that, everything's looking well. We're trying, we, you know, we had a, a good session today to see what we could do.
This is very long.
To see what we could do to get some of these units, because we really wanna get, we wanna have more damage units at the end of 2024, so that our investors can use that for us. So that's, and then AR, nothing really changes. Everything, everything, it's kind of the, you know, you have evictions, cost to let, because you have damages, and then you go to write them off, send them to collections. We've only seen one of all the collections we've sent, that have only had one individual that they were actually able to find. And so they are hoping to take that person to court, but we have to decide if we want to proceed with that, so.
Are you finding that there are more people who can't afford the rent and housing authority? Because I know your range is much.
Specifically seniors and 50% AMI units.
Oh, really?
We don't have very many 60% AMI units. Those are now something we try not to build in to the projects as much as possible, trying to get them lower, higher, and balanced in the middle, but we know that a 50% AMI unit is generally higher than what, if you're on a social security income, that's higher than you can afford for that. So that's, some of those have clearly been a challenge.
Yeah, it's kind of crazy, because even when you have 60s, you know, you may have people that are just over the limits, or people that are under the limits. And so you're, you're kind of battling it on two fronts.
Yeah. And they're too high for the 50%.
Yeah, you make, you make too much money for the 50%.
We know our, any, our 30% units never have a problem. We know that there's a high need for those. Those are also the hardest ones to build into projects. You need some of those higher AMI units to balance it out. So that's one benefit of income averaging that we will see play out here with Crispin too, and then Assent is, in exchange for adding some 70% and 80% AMI, and more middle income units, it allows us to get more 30% outside, so.
Right, public safety updates.
So, well, talking with Harold earlier this week, we talked about cameras. Looks like that we're going to be finding some money to get cameras at the Suites that originally wasn't planned for at this point, so we walk in the property with the company that we're using for purchasing and install.
Sarah, do you have the Zenia camera plan to cross reference?
So yes, I would, I would definitely.
Because if there's a, if there's a section that's not covered by everything, we're going to, okay.
Is that, has that already been done?
So where we're, so where we're finding funny is, so we're still getting ARPA interest, so I've talked to you all about ARPA interest, and we need to start washing that and certainly start getting it out the door. And, and so, uh, the ARPA interest number went up again, so we're looking at it as, as a source for cameras at the Suites.
What is that interest rate?
Uh, so our, I think, it's been over 5%. And so, it's good there, because that money just becomes ours under the treasury guidance. It's not great when you're making 5% of debt, because you end up going into arbitrage. And so, you know, Jim's been doing a lot of arbitrage calculations, in terms of what can we actually keep versus what we have to turn back over because of interest. So what it's doing is, is it's allowing us to fill some of these voids, and so we don't have to tackle this piece. One of the things that I'm noodling is, if there's an issue in maybe rehabbing the units, to kind of get a sense of what the global number is, and then I may come back to you all and go, because it's touching housing, can I use some of this interest level in this case? But I'm also trying to balance it against the broader camera piece within the entire city and what we're doing, because we know those cameras are having a tangible impact on activities that are occurring in areas, so I need to do some work on that, but I'll bring that back to you potentially at the city's side.
And as far as the cameras for the rest of properties, we are, hair is close, like, I wanna say, I hope by the end of this year, we don't have to talk about cameras anymore. I'm really hoping. So fingers crossed, Village on Main will have cameras installed first, but really close to purchasing that equipment and moving forward with it still. As far as our meth detectors go, I meet tomorrow finally with a gentleman that, the company's called Netelegard, and I briefly spoke to about this, it's a cleaning company. They basically sell, I learned, to the military. They sell to other law enforcement, milita, like, I was in military. But basically this product removes things such as anthrax from surfaces, meth, fentanyl, and it basically, it's a spray and it becomes biodegradable on a surface. So, I meet with him tomorrow, actually, going to come down there and tour the facility and see what costs are. So I think that will definitely help us on the city side of the bathroom as well, so. And then as far as, it actually was able to give some good numbers for you for calls for service, low. Total for all properties are 44 for the month. 23 were at Suites, and that was mostly core check-ins, welfare checks, kind of trespassing calls.
How does that compare to maybe, I don't know, 2020, a year ago? Whenever you would say it was high?
When we first took it over, how many a week?
Oh, we, we were there six, seven, eight times a week. And I really think it cycles because of the, you know, when, like, if someone is, is having an episode and, you know, they're, and there's several of them having some mental health issues, we'll see core there a lot, we'll see, so we really need to dive into the data, like, what kind of calls we're seeing there, so, but when we first took the Suites over, we, we were there a lot, so.
I mean, you and I would be there four or five times a week.
Yeah.
I'd personally be there.
So, I mean, breakdown for the rest of the properties, Briarwood had zero, the Lodge had four, Hearthstone had three, AMSA had three, AMN had one. So that is also, you know, multifamily, that usually is a high driver for calls for service, and that's, that's excellent. Village on Main had two, Spring Creek had three, and Fall River had seven, so.
So AMN, what we worked with Sarah, so, part of the challenge that we were seeing at Rainy Park is related to, I think I told you all, Russian olive trees that were on the corner, that was also now impacting AMN, that could have contributed to some calls for service, because they were breaking into people's patios. So that's why we made the decision to work with the property owner to cut those trees, because it would minimize the impact. And it's interesting, I live in the area, it's like 98 different when those trees went down in Jersey, what we're just seeing globally within all the adjoining neighborhoods.
Just more visual?
Well, I mean, we would have, what, 15 people in the trees?
Yeah, the canopy was so low that, I mean, you couldn't see in there, you had to physically walk in. That's how overgrown the trees were, so.
They were there.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
And, and look, many of the people that lived there were the people we were challenged with at Rainy Park, they were the people that we were challenged with at Aspen Meadow, and, and then if you lived in the area, you would just see activity all over the place. And it's 98 different, so.
You find a lot of stuff beside those trees when they went down.
Even in the bushes at the Suites, they found skis, backpack holes, weird stuff.
Skis?
Skis.
Like a nice pair of skis.
Maybe we have those once in a while. Gotta have those around in case it's snowed.
Any, any questions for me? That's all I have.
No, I think that's one of the best reports that we've had with the low impact.
So the way, so the way the camera system's gonna work is, so we're using Monstom as the video management system. That, that's gonna integrate everything. And, and so, what it's going to do from a public safety standpoint is if we have a call for service, they're gonna, is it the sergeants or the commanders that are gonna have access? Different people will have different access, but it was.
Well, all have access, but it, like, we'll have it up in patrol briefing, we'll have all, all the cameras pulled up, and they'll be able to, if there's a call for service and someone happened to be there, they can basically get on the system, review it, and see literally, like, people, things, you know, cars are driving away, people running away, being able to identify that now, and then getting officers there with that information.
So, it's gonna integrate our facility cameras, our housing authority cameras, so then, you know, so housing authority, probably most of the staff here will have access to them. The property managers will have access to their property cameras, and it's cycling into this, this broader video management system. The video management system also, because it's not proprietary, when we get to the point next year, we're going to, we have to change our access control system, because you've all seen, doors won't open, doors, the garage doors get stuck. So, it'll allow us to integrate our access control systems in our facility, so that it can integrate with the cameras, so that we can set times where no one's supposed to be here, and if somebody badges in, the cameras won't, won't see who it is. And that'll help us, I think, a lot at our housing authority properties, it's a big issue with people getting in or catching doors that are open. And then it kind of will then aggregate into parking management, so then if you have the cameras where you're managing the parking lots, it'll let us manage that too. So, it really is, what it's gonna be is this underforce multiplier that we haven't seen that actually will reduce the demand of staff type, which, when we look at, it's more of a cost avoidance over time, because we don't have to add as many positions. And then, when we look at it from a public safety standpoint, we know that it drastically reduces the time that it takes them, which actually then means we have people on the street for more time and not necessarily adding additional positions. So, that's gonna be a big change for us. And then, we're trying to figure out how we, and this isn't for housing authority, but I'm gonna go and tell you how that works within the Vision Zero piece, because the Vision Zero folks are telling us, we need to, we have issues. We have camera system that we were testing at 17th Main. We have 15,000 people in five weeks, run red lights. Now, some of those, some of.
I saw one today that was, it was completely red when he entered.
So some of those, so some of those were people that were in the turning lane, so, you know, I'm sitting there looking at accident data, the maps that we had, the speeds that we're seeing, understanding the challenges that we're having from a staffing perspective on officers, because they're all jumping cars. So they're pulling together something right now as part of Vision Zero, our camera project, and looking at funding to say, because now the law lets us put speed trailers out where they, it's a civil infraction, and so when you're speeding, it, it hits it, a company gets it, they bill you. So we're now looking at that, and we're looking at red light cameras, because even if we assumed only a third of people.
I want those red light cameras.
Even if we're assuming only a third of people, well, I've already told, I've already told my wife, I said, we need to set aside some money on the speed piece, because I'm not real great at it, but even if we assumed a third, that's 5,000 people in five weeks, and how many of those were near misses? And, and so, we'll be bringing that to you all, because, I mean, it's real, the people are complaining to us, they're complaining to you all about speeding and these issues. We can't keep saying we don't have the personnel to do this, and so we're gonna have to use technology to help us balance this. All of this is an integrated approach that we'll be bringing to the council.
Things are so circular. We were dealing with that when I was on first day.
And the speeds are crazy, I mean, if only it's example, I can look at the chart and the data, three seconds late on a red light, five seconds late on a red light. It is insane what people are doing.
We're seeing a lot of young kids on these electric bikes too, though. I mean, I went on a, a tour with the Parks and Rec folks to the different parks as part of the board activity. In three different locations around town, literally totally separate, in different sectors, and we were seeing gangs of, like, middle school, high school, young high school, riding around on these bikes, almost like motorcycle gangs, popping wheelies, running lights, and, you know, just some talent, and, and David Bell was like, what?
Okay, that is it for the updates? I'd like to watch you through, you know, I don't have any good sound.
I have just one thanks to Molly for coming to the Volcan Consortium of Cities and really shining and showing them, you know, that we've just got this stellar staff and the folks that really know what they're doing there. So, good job.
Do you have any comments, please?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Second. All those in paper. A pose.